Please.
Danny Essner.
Here.
Bob Fox.
Here.
Robbie Guard.
Here.
Victor Gunn.
Here.
Shelley Moore.
Here.
Harry Rediger.
Here.
Joseph Uzuro.
Here.
Thank you. Council need a motion to adopt the agenda. It's moved. It's moved by Guard. Seconded by Moore. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. We have an Arbor Day proclamation. Those come forward. Meet me over in the corner. There they are. This comes at a... Comes at a fitting time. I communicated this to Scott and some others. But I spoke at Cape Girardeau Downtown Rotary Club a week ago. And they're celebrating their 100th anniversary next March. And the theme for Rotary International in 2019 is the Year of the Tree. And they want to make one of their major goals and projects for 2019 to plant trees. So I forwarded that to Julia and to Scott. And they don't know what size and maybe a few big ones or a lot of saplings or what they want to do. And I think it's probably going to be under the guidance of Parks and the Tree Board. There's lots of opportunity. And it'll be an exciting thing as we proceed into 2019 to work on that project together with the Rotary Club. Might even get some partners involved in that as we move on. So very fitting that this is Arbor Day. And another thing about Arbor Day, J. Sterling Martin, and I will say that in 1872, began in my home state of Nebraska, in Nebraska City, Missouri. So whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri has been a Tree City of USA for 19 years. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, given as paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore being resolved, I, Harry Rediger, Mayor of the city of Cape Girardeau, do hereby proclaim April 7, 2018, as Arbor Day. The city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and witness their up. We've got a picture. Let me get it in the middle here.
Perfect. I agree.
All right. Any words?
We're just happy to be proactive. Julia and I were just talking about that we're now entering our 20th year of Tree City of USA and how exciting that is to have a marked anniversary and be a part of the process. And it's just an auspicious event to be a part of and know that you're doing good things with trees within the community. And happy to be here as a resident and as part of the Tree Board and as part of the agency.
Well, thank you for your service and looking forward to it. Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. Communications and reports. I think you can tell, and those of you who are watching, that we have something going on here tomorrow, April 3. We need to get the yes vote out. We need to get the people out to vote tomorrow. The weather may be suspect later in the day, but earlier in the day, I think the weather's going to be fine. And I'm going to ask Councilman Danny Essner to give his plea and support to the vote tomorrow. Danny's been very instrumental in the committee in promoting this issue and getting the facts out to the public. And Danny, thanks for your work on this, and I'll let you have it for her.
You're quite welcome. I'm just one person on the committee. We've got a great group of people. They're very passionate about this issue. And our goal has been to, like Harry said, to educate our voters, get the word out, allow people to realize how important this is to our city, to get this tax renewed. And if there's anybody in town that doesn't, hasn't heard about yes April 3, they've got to be living in a cave. I think we've done a pretty good job of sharing information. You know, we've got a website, a Facebook page. We've done a lot of mailers. Just been good coverage in newspaper. And thank you to the Southeast Missourian for the exposure that they've given us. But it's really important that anybody that's out there that agrees with me that it's important to get this renewed that day, don't assume that their vote's not going to count. Every vote's important, and we need everybody that's in support of this issue to make sure they get out to vote tomorrow and vote yes, even if you have to bring your umbrella. That's okay. But we need to get the people out, and I'm optimistic at this point in time we'll be successful. We've really have had pretty much overwhelmingly positive feedback, but you just never know for sure. No one take anything for granted. So, please vote yes tomorrow.
All right. One thing I would like to highlight is an event last Friday down on Nash Road is we dedicated a street, the Robert B. Hendrix Road on Nash Road. Bob was president of the Chamber of Commerce for years and was so instrumental in establishing and promoting and really working to make Nash Road work as an industrial development. And you drive down Nash Road back and forth today, you see the fruits of his labor. And it, as we said there, it's not as much about buildings as it is about jobs. A lot of jobs down there on Nash Road. And I was proud to be able to participate in that dedication last Friday. Other...
Bob? Mr. Mayor, I was honored to be able to attend the Main Street Now National Meeting in Kansas City, Sunday to Wednesday. And it was a great meeting, meeting other people from other cities and other downtown areas that are doing redevelopment and doing revitalization of their downtowns. And it's really neat to see how there are other places around the country being successful. And we also got... We had two different presentations given by our own Cape Girardeau. We have one called Art Smart and one called Coordination of Higher Education and Your Downtown Development. Carlos Fargus was there with Dr. Hoffman and Marla giving that one. And then we had another group present the other one on art and downtown. And it was, both of them were very, very well attended, a lot of positive comments on what's going on in Cape. And while I'm talking about Main Street, you all probably know this. Old Town Cape Historic Landmark Preservation Group received another state award, the Preserve Missouri Award, for their work on the Marquette Hotel. And that is the second award they've received this year already for that project. So that's a big deal.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Last Friday, we... There's a group of us that are on the comprehensive subdivision 2040. That is a guide to coordinate the growth and development of our city. And we got to see the first draft, and we'll be seeing the subsequent drafts over the next few months.
We're looking at having an open house and public hearing on a public meeting on a main night.
All right. So coming right along. While I've got this platform, I'd want to say some thank yous for me personally. Danny Essner, and I know this is your last council meeting. I want to tell you thank you for stepping up and volunteering your time. I know you've got a lot on your plate. You've been a huge champion for this community, and I want to say thank you.
You're welcome. It's been a pleasure.
Shelley? I want to wish you good luck tomorrow. And I want to tell you I really enjoyed working with you and getting to know you better. Joe? I want to tell you, I know this is your last meeting, and I appreciate all your help over the last two years to get me up to speed, and I've learned so much. And you're such an intelligent and heartful guy and care, really care about this community. And I've learned a lot from you, and I appreciate everything.
You're welcome.
Harry? You say the best for last, right? Two years ago, you and I didn't really know each other real well. You took me under your wing and taught me a lot of things that I want to really say thank you for.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you being a champion for Cape Girardeau.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, I got a few thank yous too before I turn this back to Scott for any staff comments. My thanks for eight years. Been really a pleasure. Thanks Scott, Molly, and staff for their support as we worked through a lot of development and a lot of issues over the last eight years. Special thanks to Gail, to Nicolet, to Bruce, and to Amanda. Those are my go-to people for detail, and are they super people to always follow through. But the ultimate thanks go to the citizens of our community because they have been the ones that have really supported our community through votes, through encouragement to council, for projects, developers who believe in what we're doing, believe in our city. So the thanks really need to be outpouring to all of our citizens and our developers and those who really believe in continuing to make Cape Girardeau grow and be an important part of a regional hub and a great place to live. Other... Shelley?
Yes, this past Saturday, I went to the Cape Museum, and they had a program called Let the Church Say Amen Number Two. And it was awesome. It was awesome. They presented songs from slavery all the way up to now where we at today. And your host right here had the opportunity to sing some. But it was a good. It was good. So I just want to make sure that you guys, next year, you guys come to that. It was not packed, but it was tight.
Very good. Anyone else? Staff? What'd you sing?
Just the other day.
Just the other day? Okay. Song you wrote? You are singing now?
No.
Well, I, and I guess continuing the thank yous, you know, we're blessed. I, you know, go to a lot of meetings with other city managers and hear a lot of them talk about dysfunctional councils. I hear them talk about maybe one or two council members who are just out to get another part of the council. Or they're out to do things that are harmful to their city. You know, we don't have that here. We have seven people that care deeply about their city and want what's best for it. Now then, there's always, with all of us, there's always this, what should be first and what should be second. It's always about what are we doing to make it better, not tearing things down or tearing others down. And we're really blessed that way. And I think it starts at leadership, Mayor. You've had that kind of leadership for eight years. And I appreciate it personally as we together move the city forward. If it only happens through leadership, and if you don't have it in your mayor and your council, you might as well even start. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And thank you to Joe and to Danny. Your time here is left to mark, and your leadership has been noted. And I could see a day when both of you would take another leadership role again. So I'm not going to let you off the hook to say this is the end, but maybe it's a timeout for a little while, and we'd like to see that. So again, we're blessed to have great choices in this year's election. We had a few of the candidates were here earlier that we voted on tomorrow. We're excited about working with them, excited about working with the new mayor. And we will be blessed again with seven people who want what's best for our community and who want to move us forward. And with that, we will see another decade of tremendous growth. But thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. That was going to be my last comments, as I'm very encouraged with the incoming council under the leadership of incoming Mayor Bob Fox. And the council, I think we're well set to move into the future. Very encouraged with that. Okay. We'll move on. We have two public hearings tonight. Number one, a public hearing to consider request to rezone property at 835-835 Bodien Lane from R2, single-family urban residential district to R4, medium-density multifamily residential district. This public hearing is open for anyone to address the council at this point. Yes, sir. Mr. Hardle.
Good evening. My name is Chad Hardle from Jackson. And this request for rezoning is really for the same development that I came back to the city, or I came to the city council for a resolution of support several months ago. And this piece of ground is more desirable than the first piece of land that I had because of some problems with the topography of that ground. So I felt fortunate to be able to option this land and have requests for rezoning it from R2 to R4. Here is a revised site plan. It is the same type building that I presented before, slab-on-grade, four and six units buildings. And actually, this ground touches the other land. The southwest corner touches the Gibson ground that I presented before. But to make that land work, I had to combine it with another piece of ground to the west, and there's a big ditch there. So to be able to avoid crossing that ditch. So it's, you know, all of the same fundamentals as the other application, just on a piece of ground that lends itself better to this development. Had the opportunity to visit with Chief Lehrer and Corporal Crouch, kind of getting ahead of the curve as far as security and things we can do up front, design-wise, to make this a safer place to live. And have some ideas built in that I want to go forward with this comes to fruition, such as security cameras, fencing, and also budgeted in some security patrols. And so really trying to do everything we can to keep the community safe and especially at this stage of the game, which really helps.
Okay. Great. Same layout, really, numbers and everything that you've had before.
Right. Still 40 units, still all two-bedroom apartments, and still same structure in all other respects.
Counsel, questions, comments?
Good project.
Be a great project for that area. We welcome it.
Thanks for everyone's help. I hate to see some of the faces move on, but hopefully they'll come back.
We're not moving that far.
Well, thank you, Harry, for all your help.
Thank you.
Hope you stay involved as much as you have in the past. You've been a great help.
I will. You're a great partner, Jen. Anyone else to appear? Public hearing's still open. Okay. If not, we'll close this public hearing. And let's, counsel, let's move to item number 17. Bill number 18-41, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of property located at 835 Bodien Lane in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from R2 to R4. First reading. It's moved by Fox.
I second that.
And seconded by Essner. Discussion? Again, saying this is a, will be a great improvement for that area and a needed project. Any other discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Done. First read. Second, a public hearing to consider vacating the city's interest in public right-of-way for Decatur Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Public hearing is open for anyone to appear before the council. Okay. None, we'll close this public hearing. Anyone else to appear before the council on any item that is on the agenda? That is on the agenda. Yes, sir.
First before the card here.
Okay.
I had a couple of concerns regarding the...
And your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Will Reimer. I'm one of the two owners of Reimers on the Plaza. We're currently located in the northernmost building of the proposed redevelopment by Cape Dogwood.
Okay. Sure.
To begin with, this is great. I mean, this is a really good thing. It just so happens that while we've been preaching this same thing to everybody for nine years now, that we're kind of being pushed to the wayside of this. I mean, we've spent nine years kind of letting everybody know that downtown's not the only district in, you know, in the region that has a viable option for entertainment purposes. We've been in business now for nine years, and in those nine years, we have had zero liquor violations in the city of Cape Girardeau. That's, it's an accomplishment. It truly is. We don't have a police presence there. We've never had to have, you know, we're not known as one of those establishments that are a roughneck fighting problematic-style bar. We have a good relationship with our local police department, and it's something we've really fought hard for. The spot that we chose for our business maybe could have been chosen a little bit better. It was, we really never had any backing from, you know, from the owner of all of the Plaza before now. We've been preaching this, like I said, for nine years now. Somebody, please, take an interest in this Plaza. Like I said, we're being left out. It would appear that way. I know that several people have tried to find a solution for this, and we keep being called, and this is driving me crazy, folks, the northernmost building. We're not just the northernmost building. We're a group of people that are in that building that bust our butts to give that area a nice glow with what we are able to do as tenants. I mean, obviously, us not owning the property ourselves, we're not going to throw it, you know, all of our resources at it. That being said, two years ago, a year and a half, we spent $15,000 just doing a renovation to the area. My father, I'd watched him paint parking lot lines outside because nobody else would do it. I got out there this past winter whenever it was icy and snowy. We had a band that night. And for public interest, I had salt bags over my shoulders throwing salt and, you know, doing stuff that hasn't been done for years. I just want to make sure that while all this is going on, that everything's followed to a T and that, you know, any opportunity that we have for relocation help, we could really use it right now.
Okay.
I feel like we've done our due diligence as far as what we gave back to the city, and we cleaned up a problematic bar itself. Whenever we took over, you know, the bar that was there previously, it was, it wasn't a good place to go. I know that the people had good intentions for it, but it had become kind of a rougher establishment. They lasted 10 months. We're here nine years later. We really don't want to see this all fade because of, you know, an issue with where we chose to put our spot and then see it, you know, all that come to fruition and us not be present for it. So it, the Cape Dogwood Redevelopment Group has cited Missouri 533, I believe, and the statute 67. And in those, it lays out that, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself there. In the development plan that they submitted to the city, it says that nobody's, however, those relocations will not cause any undue hardship because businesses will be offered the opportunity to relocate within the redevelopment area. Right now, there's really nothing that they can offer us. So I know that Mr. Patel has been gracious. He came to us in the beginning, and he has tried to work with us. So has John Maynor. He's been instrumental trying to help us, but we're still, we're not finding that. I mean, we have almost 5,000 square feet to play with. We just got done, we just finished building a kitchen, and now it looks like all that that we put in, it's just going to... So I just want to make sure that, you know, that the statutes that we're citing to push this through, that they're followed to a T, and everybody has a chance to partake of this.
Okay. Well, thank you. Number one, thank you for appearing. I hear your support because you know what it's been. We're all very interested in maintaining current good businesses, no question, including through the chamber, including through Magnet. Mr. Maynor's sitting right there, as you can see, through the city. And I know the Dogwood Development people. That is in Phase 2, as I understand it.
It is.
So we got some time.
However, I believe that I'm scheduled to be, my last day there is July 1
of this year.
So I'm looking at, I have three months now to decide where I'm going to go. And in the meantime, I also have all my licensing hearing, or my, not hearings, we obviously, we're in good standing. We don't have hearings. But all of our, my licensing, you know, is all coming due, and I can't fill out. I'm going to have penalties out the wazoo trying to explain where my business is going to be located, if my business is going to be relocated.
Yeah. Understand.
So it's really putting me in a harsh position. I feel, you know, I'm not going to, I don't agree with every single part of it. I don't feel like we ourselves are blighted. We've been voted the third-best bar in Cape for four, five years strong now. We still, even through all this, we packed capacity two weeks ago. And we have a good crew of people that come by and support us. And I just wanted the opportunity to continue that.
Okay. Very good. Well, we do too. Still open for anyone to appear on any item that is on the agenda. Okay. Eric, the consent agenda.
Bill number 18-35, an ordinance approving the petition for the creation of Community Improvement District, establishing Cape Dogwood Community Improvement District as political subdivision in the state of Missouri and directing city clerks to notify the Missouri Department of Economic Development of the creation of the district. An ordinance approving a petition for the creation of Community Improvement District, establishing Cape Dogwood Community Improvement District as political subdivision in the state of Missouri and directing city clerk to notify the Missouri Department of Economic Development of the creation of the district. Number 18-36, an ordinance designating a certain tract of land in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri as a blighted area pursuant to Chapter 353, the revised statutes of Missouri, as amended approving the development plan submitted for the redevelopment of that blighted area, approving a development agreement in connection therewith, authorizing certain actions in connection therewith, and containing a severability clause. An ordinance designating a certain tract of land in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri as a blighted area pursuant to Chapter 353, revised statutes of Missouri, as amended approving the development plan submitted for the redevelopment of that blighted area, approving a development agreement in connection therewith, authorizing certain actions in connection therewith, and containing a severability clause. Number 18-37, an ordinance approving the Lunsford subdivision. An ordinance approving the Lunsford subdivision. Number 18-38, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Catholic Charities of Southern Missouri for 2018 emergencies solution grant funds from the Missouri Housing Development Commission. Number 18-39, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Community Care and Council for 2018 emergency solutions grant funds from the Missouri Housing Development Commission. Number 18-40, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Safe House for Women Inc. for 2018 emergency solutions grant funds from the Missouri Housing Development Commission. Number 18-43, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Salvation Army for 2018 emergency solutions grant funds from the Missouri Housing Development Commission. Number 18-46, resolution authorizing city manager to execute a license indemnity agreement with H&amp;H Center Property LLC for installation of a sign at 400 Broadway in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18-47, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a supplemental agreement with KLG Engineering LLC for the independent sidewalk project in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18-49, a resolution of the city of Cape Girardeau opposing any grant of authority by the state of Missouri to the Osage Nation of Oklahoma or others to expand tribal gaming in Missouri. Number 18-50, a resolution of the city of Cape Girardeau opposing Senate Bill 767 of Proposed Missouri Video Lottery Control Act. Number 18-51, a resolution of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri in opposition to Missouri House Bill 1510 and the 99th Missouri General Assembly, which would prevent interior inspections under city residential rental licensing programs.
Counsel, you've heard the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent? Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda? So moved. So moved by Essner. Seconded by Fox. Any discussion?
Mayor, please mark my vote in extension on number six, which is eighteen dash thirty-seven.
Got that, Bruce? Item number six. Okay. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel, we've taken action on number seventeen. Number eighteen, eighteen dash forty-two, An Ordnance Amending Chapter Seventeen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by Regarding Chronic Nuisance Properties, first read. By Guard? Seconded by Zeram. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number nineteen, eighteen dash forty-four, An Ordnance Amending Various Sections of Chapter Twenty-Three of the City Code relating to Stormwater Management Regulations, first read. By Guard? Seconded by Zeram. Any discussion?
Harry, I would just mention that this is, this came out of our developers' meeting.
It did.
I'm going to give kudos to staff. I know that sometimes we can, that can be difficult to get something that's viable out of it, sometimes to pull things out, so to speak, but I'm glad to see that was a, that was a good meeting. Thank you, staff.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number twenty, Bill number eighteen dash forty-five, An Ordnance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Quit Claim Deeds，在Transferring Property to Adjacent Property Owners for Melody Lane in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, first read. By Guard?
I second that.
And seconded by Essner. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And number twenty-one, A Bill Number Eighteen Dash Forty-Eight, An Ordnance Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement with American Ramp Company for the Design and Construction of Skate Park in Arena Park in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, first read. So moved by Fox.
I second that.
Seconded by Essner. Any discussion? Well, compliment to Chris Hudson for staying with this through it. We didn't quite get the private funds total that we had, but we made it fit, and it's a project that was driven by private, by private citizen. That's going to come to fruition. Any other discussion? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? An appointment to the TIF, Tech's Increment Financing Commission, that'd be a re-